The City Council, it's Monday, May 11th at 7:02 PM. And tonight we are having committees. And our government channel staff have posted on our Facebook page and also on our city website that if citizens would like to join in, there is a login. There's login information on the city council website, so you may do that. And then the government channel will direct you if you would like to make comments. They'll be monitoring that during the course of our discussion. The first item for our business tonight is the Committee of the Whole, and we will be discussing the solid waste, the contract, and the fees for this. And Councilmember Crowe.
Thank you, President Nisley. Tonight, we are continuing to discuss the solid waste contract, which we have begun to enter into by accepting or in the process of accepting the lowest and best bid for the city of Athens, coming from the Athens Hocking Recycling Centers. We have two ordinances that are coming up for a third reading next week. The first of which is 06020. And this is an ordinance which authorizes our service safety director to enter into a contract for municipal refuse recycling and composting. We are looking at this contract to include refuse recycling and composting. After a very long period of examining the addition of composting services to the city of Athens, we have received a fair amount of citizen input on this process. And I, for one, appreciate all of the conversations that I've had with many people in Athens. And I would like to address some of those comments tonight, prior to opening it up to the council for further discussion. We received, as read into the record at our meeting last week, a letter from the Far East Side Neighborhood Association. And they requested council consider three specific items. One of the items was to renegotiate the terms of the contract with the lowest and best bidder Athens Hocking Recycling Centers. We have investigated the process of doing something like that with our law director and by examining the Ohio Revised Code. And it's not possible to renegotiate the current, the terms of a contract that the city municipality has bid, put out a bidding process for services. If we were to... And an easy way to think about why the Ohio Revised Code has this stipulation is that anyone, any other business that had put in a bid for that contract, for those services, would have to, under the law, be allowed to also renegotiate their bid for those services. So it could be, as you can imagine, a never-ending cycle of going back to many different businesses to say, well, we've renegotiated. Should we renegotiate with you, et cetera? It's not allowed by the Ohio Revised Code, and it makes sense to me why that is so. A second part of the letter from the Nina was to amend the ordinance for the contract to remove composting as a requested service from this service provider. And of course, another ordinance connected, under discussion, and also up for a third reading next week are the changes to the fees for the citizens of Athens necessary to pay for these services. And so Nina is also asking that those, the composting fee, also not be included in the fee ordinance. Because this is a contract for a three-year period of time, if we were to decide to remove composting as a service that the city of Athens is requesting at this time, that would have to be for the duration of the contract. So we would be looking at a three-year period without composting services. So that's something we can discuss tonight. Another request in the Nina letter was that we spend the next year examining more closely the need and the benefits of composting in Athens. And while I would say, first of all, we don't have a year to do that. It would have to be a three-year period. I will also say that the mayor, working with Rural Action, started a pilot program and requested that Rural Action examine this for the city of Athens. And Rural Action did a full survey of citizens and offered a pilot program and kept records of the participants in the program and the pounds collected per week, et cetera. And the end result was a recommendation to add these services to the city of Athens. So I think we have data, valuable data, that can guide us in making this decision. And then, just to point out, the other issues with not entering into the composting portion of this contract in this year. Now, as we've been just talking in the last few weeks, one option is not to, given the current COVID-19 crisis, and my, as a fellow Ohio University employee and not being aware of my status, my working status going forward, my heart goes out to those who recently lost their positions at the university, and they, some of them are friends of mine and coworkers. And I completely understand the financial difficulties that many are finding themselves in due to the current crisis. So one possibility for discussion tonight during our Committee of the Whole is delaying, if we do decide to continue to include composting as a service that we are requesting from AHRC, delaying the composting fee portion until January. We believe that the garbage fund has enough of a balance that we can cover the cost of the composting service from July 1, 2020 through December 31st, 2020. But we would start those fees beginning in January. Now, the discussion tonight is mainly about the contract that we will enter into. We will need to have a third reading of that contract next Monday and a decision on that contract in order to have the 30 days prior to the beginning of that contract on July 1st. So if we want to, I'm happy to open up the discussion to all of these topics and to hear from the public or anything, anyone else. But if we divide this up, we're looking at 06020, which is entering into the contract, and then separately, the fees. And the fees could, don't have the necessity of the 30 days in advance. So we can, we can continue to discuss that. We can amend that ordinance next week and re-enter it. And we probably, I don't have to look at the calendar. I don't think we can still read it three times if we do amend it and it goes back to a first reading prior to the July 1 date. But we can certainly read it once and maybe twice before suspending the rules to accept it. So I will look at Chris and Debbie and the mayor to make sure I haven't confused anything there or spoken out of turn. But Kathy's there too. Does anyone have any, yes, Chris, please?
And just wanting to clarify that I think that on 6020, that's the renewal of the contract, if we did amend that, that we would read for the first time next week. But in order to allow the 30 days, because that doesn't have an emergency clause, we would have to amend next week, then suspend, then approve.
Sorry, right, if we, if we change it, if it...
If we change it.
As is, then it's third reading next week and it is done. But, sorry, correct. If we amend that language, the current language says, "An ordinance authorizing the service safety director to enter into a contract for municipal refuse, recycling, and composting." So if we decide that we are going to remove any of those, and I think it would just be the composting, then we would have to, excuse me, suspend the rules and have an emergency declaration. Counsel, any thoughts on the matter?
I have a question. First off, Member Crowe, thanks so much for that summary. I think you did a fine job summarizing the complex conversations that we've had up to date, so I appreciate that. We had asked and spoke about this a few different times. And I wonder if you know an answer now of whether or not we can continue the current pilot project as is?
I actually did not hear back from the director of AHRC on that, on that exact topic. He was going to check with his board about whether they could continue at the current price. And I did not get that response, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm seeing no other discussion on...
Councilmember Katsas.
Oh, he's not on my screen, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I had to squeeze you, squeezed off. Go ahead, please, there you are, please, Member Katsas.
Thank you. And I guess, I guess my question would be, the, what are we talking about impacting the garbage fund if we are to absorb the composting cost for six months? Do we have a dollar amount?
I believe it was...
The composting is $11,583 per month, I think.
So that's about $66,000 to the end of the year.
Yeah, but we know that the bid from Athens Hocking Recycling Centers was $139,000. So that would be correct, that would be half of that. That would be six months of that contract. Say I went back, you know, we received two bids for services this year. And as I said, Athens Hocking Recycling was the low bid and the best bid for the city. But the other bid, slightly higher in price, was very similar in terms of composting. They were within $3,000 of the specific bid for the alternate option of composting if the city decides to go with this. So they're very, very similar. We trust many of the figures for many reasons, but also because the two different businesses that bid on these services were very similar in their cost structure. So roughly $70,000, Member Katsas. And I believe we had a balance of $83,000 in the garbage fund. So speaking with Auditor Hecht about this, we definitely like to have a balance in that fund. And Member Reisner has been spoken very well on that too. But we are able in this time to use that for the next six months.
If I could just make a quick mention that I think that, you know, at any time, if the public needed a break, I think it's, I think it's right now. So thank you.
Thank you, yes, Member Reisner.
Yeah, a couple of things. I agree with Member Katsas. I really think in this crisis, we need to give the public a break on this. So two things, one, I would postpone the composting. Second thing is, I would amend the ordinance for next week for the fees to make sure that we're at the scenario one, the break even, rather than an extra 5% on top, which I believe is what the ordinance is reading right now. Is that correct?
I believe the ordinance right now does read the 5% over break even.
Okay, I would eliminate that.
Amending the composting fee, we would amend to the zero, to the break even.
Yes. So I'd like to see an amendment put forward next week. If no one else is willing to do it, I will.
Yes, Mayor Patterson, oh, I'm sorry.
I just had a quick clarification question for Member Reisner. When you say postponing composting, do you say postponing the fee until January or postponing it for the three-year period?
Well, I don't like to see it go three years. It would seem to me it would be possible somewhere along the line, if conditions improved, say in 2021, that we could come up with a separate contract, not amend the current one, or hopefully we won't amend the one that we're trying to pass now, but an entirely separate composting ordinance with a composting vendor. I mean, it could go out the bed like anything else. Or maybe there's a technicality in the law that says we can go to a single provider. I don't know, but I think it's worth exploring.
Member Grace and Member Fall, I see both of you and Member Klaubfelder. Let me just also add that in conversation with a citizen, I looked at a recommended program that he had recommended to me in the Portland, Maine area. And it is a wonderful program, and they provide soil amendment back to residents who are part of the program. And it is not part of the city's services, it is a separate business. And I just did note that that program is $15 a month. So we could look at an additional program, not done through the municipality, but the cost of that would probably be much higher. And due to that cost, probably not have the kind of environmental impact that we were hoping to achieve through a municipal program. Uh, Member Grace, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Member Crowe. I just want to express to you my sincere appreciation for all the work that you have done on this to try to summarize our conversations and keep everybody on track on this issue. And I'm concerned about setting the fees to the exactly break even point for that fund, especially if we deplete any surplus in the fund by delaying implementation of the fees. I've certainly heard from numerous residents talking about an increased awareness and the option of reducing their service to one container. And we know there's a lot of financial uncertainty going forward for the city. We may have fewer residents, we may have more people just switching from two containers to one. And if we set the fees to exactly break even and covering our expenses for that account, I'm afraid we're going to be having to cover expenses out of the general fund or that we'll be back here discussing the need to increase the fees because of a deficit. So that, I've been going back and forth thinking about the costs and how to do this. But, but it, to me, it doesn't make sense to increase to the absolute minimum that we need to to cover the expenses when, when there are so many uncertainties. I just, I think we'd be looking at trouble in that fund. I'm watching your face, Auditor Hecht. I, I just, I think that if we set it at the minimum, that we're going to be looking at needing to cover this bill in other ways in the not-too-distant future. Auditor Hecht, if you would like to correct me or say that you think I'm wrong about that, I will certainly, certainly respect that.
No, no, I tend to agree with you. I don't, I think we could get through the year on the bare minimum. And we've been in on several conversations about this. But I think we have to be careful in a fund where we have a $1.6 million contract that we don't cut ourselves too short. You know, we should have some money in there. I think we can get by with that. It's really up to council, but it's, you know, like you said, break even is break even. So, you know, I guess part of it, if we're not going to do the composting right away, but I think we might find out when you go to add composting in January that you will also need to increase the fees. But if you look at it, it's not huge amounts. And I think we can go with just the break even right now. But I think you need to be prepared that it won't just be adding composting in January. You will also be increasing your fees a little bit. So, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Auditor Hecht. I see the hands coming up, hold on, I just wanted to note that I finally turned my chat on. Mr. Underwood at AHRC has responded. He says, "If city council doesn't move forward with citywide composting, the AHRC Board of Directors would like it to continue to provide the service if at all possible. We are willing to work with the city to make that happen in some capacity. We would like to work within the bounds of the current contract proposal if at all possible." And Bruce, just so you know, it would be possible here to have you speak on camera, audio, if you would like. But first, let's go back to, I think, Member Fall, did you want to say something?
I think, like what Jeff was saying, is whether we can, and what looks like the AHRC board is looking at is phasing in maybe composting. And that might be able to be worked into, like, verbiage into it. You know, we've had a pilot, we've had recommendations, we have people who are wanting to go into the program. One person said to me, "Well, there was only 90 people in the..." And so nobody wanted, well, that was, the pilot was capped. And they had more people who wanted to be in it than they could absorb. So I think that there is a really, people are, they want it. A lot of people want it. I've gotten a lot of emails and comments from people. But maybe looking at phasing in or doing some kind of cost share with looking at the contract going forward, figuring out how it costs share or phasing it in, like what Jeff was saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Fall. Just clarify that the 95 was the number of people who decided to opt in at the $20.65 per month charge. There were 300, close to 300 in the pilot program. And I did contact Andrea Rini, who ran that program for Rural Action, and she confirmed that it was capped. They had to turn away people because we didn't have the, the city was subsidizing that and we didn't want to go over the budget that we had allocated for that. I know that Member Grace and Member Smedley both had comments. Are you still wishing to, Member Grace?
Thank you, Member Crowe. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's better, even though this is a really difficult financial time, it's better to be planning carefully, our finances. And the other thing that could certainly impact this fund is if some of our local businesses, and I truly would hate to see this, and I hope it doesn't happen, but if some of our businesses that are, have service through this are unable to reopen, that would again reduce what we collect for this fund. So I, I think, yeah, we could set it at a break even point for right now and then come back in six months and say, okay, well, now we need to raise the rates again. And I, I don't know if, if that's better, having to keep coming back and readjusting because we don't have quite enough to cover our expenses. But that was all, thank you.
Member Smedley?
My question had to do with, related to what Member Grace was just talking about, whether or not to do break even or the 5%. And my question was whether or not we're expecting, if there's this concern about expenses going up, but it sounds like it's more of a concern about revenues coming, going down, if that's, if that's the accurate assessment. And Auditor Hecht, if you wanted to chime in. My inclination is to agree with Member Reisner, is to go with the break even just because of the situation that we're in right now. But I understand fully what Member Grace is saying, that it is also important to keep in mind what our financial situation will be like long term. But also agree with Member Katsas is saying is if the residents could use a break right now is the time. But Auditor Hecht, if you have any, do you have any feedback or any other comments you want to provide?
No, no, I don't think we're going to go in the hole by doing the break even. And I just think council should be prepared that we might have to increase the rates some. Personally, I'd rather we did the smaller incremental rates. Nobody wants to get hit with a really large increase all at once. So I think the break even will absolutely get us through the year. You know, we're almost halfway through anyway, so, yeah. If that's, yeah, it's a really tough time to put too much on people.
Member Klaubfelder?
I very much respect what Auditor Hecht just said, as well as Member Reisner and Member Smedley's points about just having the, you know, the, not raising the prices as much as we could. But I really like David Riggs' idea about having a 5% increase just so that we could give a discount to people. And he was talking about retired people, but a lot of the retired people that I know have a lot more money than I do. And so I think if we're going to give a discount, we should try to figure out a way to find out who is unemployed, who's on SNAP, who's on Medicaid. I don't know if, I wasn't able to reach somebody at the Job and Family Services Office. I suspect all that information is highly confidential. I don't know if there'd be, if we would have to ask people to self-identify, and I know that would take longer, or if there's a way to just find out all at once who's on those programs and who could use a break in particular. But if there's some way we could find out, in my opinion, it would be most important to provide a break for that part of our population, which has no doubt grown way too much, just in the last month or so, as so many people have lost their jobs. But I also agree with Member Grace's points about how we really could lose money if people start being more, more, start helping the environment by cutting the amount of trash that they go out every year, every week. So if people go from three containers to two, or two containers to one, that would actually lose us money, even though it would be good for the environment and the landfill. So I guess I'm in favor of having the 5% increase, but trying to give people who really need a discount to get a 25% discount. And I like the idea of covering the costs of the compost program until January. I like that very much. Thank you.
Member Reisner?
Yeah, two things. Don't forget, you know, we're talking about raising the rates here. We're also, under Transportation Committee, going to be talking about the street levy renewal. Now, just thinking, we're going to raise rates on people. They're going to get hit, and then they're going to look at the ballot in November and say, "Oh, my God, you want me to renew this thing?" I mean, this, it's going to have an impact. So, you know, what if they don't renew our streets? The street levy, that money disappears. What is that, like, a couple hundred thousand bucks, Kathy?
It's about $900,000, Member Reisner.
$900,000? Okay. Well, if that goes down, we'll really be in the hole then. So, you know, one thing leads to another, we got to be careful what we do. You piss off the voters, you know, they'll take revenge. So, and these are hard times. The second point is that I think we all got a little email from Alan Swain concerning the unemployment figures for this, this time. It went up about 3,000 claims, which probably puts our unemployment rate in the county somewhere between 15 and 20%. And those jobs aren't coming back fast, if they come back at all. OU's not going to rehire the people they let go. And the restaurants aren't going to be hiring people fast once they start reopening. It's going to be a slow rehire. So the money's not going to be coming in very fast. to be a slow rehire. So the money's not going to be coming in very fast. And who knows? They may not even go back up to full staff. They may have learned, hey, you know, we really don't need all that many people. So there's a lot of uncertainty here. I think we've got to be very cautious with, with what we're doing. And I, I want to take the most conservative, which is terrible for me, being a flaming socialist, course of action for the, for our rates. So, I, I want to keep it at the bare minimum and we'll, we'll feel our way through. Dr. Acton on the Mike and Amy Show at 2:00 in the afternoon keeps reminding everybody that these are very unknown times. We're feeling our way through them. And that, that's what we're doing. So to try to say, we need to build up the fund for three years because we know things are going to be this or that, we don't know what's going to happen. And I think the best thing is we may have to take incremental changes. We may have to go back every six months and adjust. But hey, that's why they're paid, that's why they paid us the big bucks here, you know? So, that's all.
Member Smedley?
Member Reisner, I mean, I, I can't, I agree so much with what you said. There's just so much uncertainty with, with what we're facing now and into the future. Any other time, I would have no hesitation to support and be all for, for one, the 5% rate increase, and then also the pilot, the, the composting citywide, no question. And so it's, it's all about the timing and what's going on right now that has me on feeling like I need, we need to pause and reevaluate and think about the impact that we're going to have on our, on the people of the city. And so at this point, I, I still strongly feel that it would be prudent to, to do, I'm sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here, break even amounts, and then also reevaluating whether or not we want to do citywide composting right now. With the caveat that it's coming to the city of Athens eventually, it's something we've, we've committed to and want to do, just now is not the time. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Smedley. Any other council members? Let's go to Mayor Patterson.
Oh, sorry.
I just want to remind council that whatever action taken, whether it's, you know, the break even, and even to some degree, the 5% increase, whatever that is, not acting on the composting option, keep in mind that the mantra tonight, I've heard many of you say, the uncertainty of what we have in store ahead of us, that if we, when, once, if and once we start losing accounts in that fund, we still have a minimum under the contract that we have to pay AHRC, and we will have to pay that. You know, if there are, if accounts show a significant increase, then we would pay more to AHRC because of that increase, and that's in the contract as well. But it doesn't work the same in reverse. So we certainly have to keep that in mind. We don't know what's going to happen through the rest of the summer. We don't know what's going to happen into next fall. Whether the largest employer in the city, depending on what actions they, they decide to take, we could in fact see even fewer accounts in some of the areas of the city, and that will certainly affect that revenue stream coming into the garbage fund in which we pay that contract. So keep that in mind, council. Member Claude Felter?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, for reminding us of those important facts. I think what you said really supports Member Grace's comments earlier. And as much as I want to help people save money as possible, I think if we do the 5% increase, that would help us just keep things going if, if we lose a lot of accounts. And I really would like to give a discount to low-income people. And we can't do that at the break even point, for, for sure. So, just my two cents, I, I, this, I know, this is just the worst possible time. I completely understand. It's just almost tragic that this contract, contract to have our trash and recycling collected has, we have to have a new contract beginning July 1st. It's horrible. I, I agree with that. I know people are hurting. That's why I think it would be good to have a discount for the, for people who are low income, however we want to define that. I mentioned the idea of people who are on SNAP and unemployment and Medicaid, but there might be a better way. Maybe we could talk to someone like Jack Fresh or some expert who is, is, really knows a lot about these things. But partially to just cover the uncertainty, as Member Grace stated and Mayor Patterson, I think, pretty strongly implied there, I think the 5%, I don't quite know what to call it, the 5% increase, the 5% overage, whatever, the 5% point, would be good. And, and Member Reisner, I really do understand your point about making people angry. I think we've already done that, in fact. But you all have more experience than I do. But I just wonder if it would make people even angrier if we have more and more fees increased every six months. Like be going, oh my gosh, they're doing this again and again and again. I wonder if it, I, I don't know if it's better to kind of just rip the Band-Aid off all at once and make sure we can keep this program going, or to sort of, just, you know, I don't know. You know what I mean? It could be like a death by a thousand cuts, I'm afraid, if we just keep having to reanalyze every things and, and increase the fees every three months or four months or six months for the next three years. I, I'm afraid that would drive people nuts. But you all have more experience than I do in that department.
Member Reisner?
Well, I, I understand where you're coming from, but let's, let's take it from this point of view. Suppose 5% isn't enough. Suppose everybody changes from two cans to one, and we lose several hundred accounts. 5% won't make it either. Why not just go for 10, right? Right off the top? Make sure.
Thank you, Member Reisner, and Member Claude Felter. Let me address one more thing that's come in. Mr. Underwood has let us know that there are actually between 150 and 160 participants currently doing the compost service at that higher rate, at that $20.65, I believe it is, rate. And I did have some discussions this week with members of the public about an opt-in or an opt-out program for composting. But it does not appear that that is allowable by the way that we put out the bid for services. That would be renegotiating the, the terms of the contract, and we are not able to renegotiate those terms due to the Ohio Revised Code. So the opt-in, opt-out, we, I have discussed with some citizens about the way that the SOPEC carbon fee is set up. And it has been eloquently explained to me that, that that fee is, it's not an opt-in to the fee, it's an opt-in to SOPEC. It's an opt-in to, I want to have my electricity contract with SOPEC, part of the aggregation program. So it's a different than a city service, providing a service. And so those are sort of apples and oranges. But that's the answer for those who are asking about the possibility of having this be an opt-in or opt-out. And just one more time, the other sort of point that I've been addressing with many citizens is that the fact that they and their neighbors compost in their backyard. And I think that that's wonderful. And as I've said before, I do that as well. And there's been some question about whether you could get soil amendment compost back from the provider, the service provider, were you to engage in the curbside collection. But much like recycling, they have a, a business process of keeping our fees lower by being able to sell that to farmers and buy the cubic yard. So they cannot offer that for free back to citizens, but they can offer a discount to, to citizens. So that can be worked out for those who wanted to composting back from the system. As I've said before, you know, I have a family of two children in college and everybody's home now. And so we have, we're filling up our little kitchen compost bin more than my wife and my youngest son I normally do. We have so much soil amendment in our backyard. We don't, you know, we don't have, we have plenty. So, so we're going to use the service if we decide to go that direction. And, and when our, when our supply is low in the backyard, we'll start piling it up in the backyard again. So I think both can be very helpful and return that soil to the work and really, you know, be a carbon sink and capture, capture the carbon in the soil and, and return everything to the earth. And that's the plan. But this has been a great discussion the last couple of weeks. I agree with everyone. These are difficult, difficult times, and these are some of the hardest conversations that I've had with the public about raising fees and understanding where people are. And I really appreciate everyone's involvement. Anything else that anyone else wants to say about the solid waste contract for next week, the two ordinances? One, contract for the services, and the second being the fees? Okay, thank you, President Isley.
Thank you very much. And thanks for all the citizen input, too. We appreciate that. We'll move on now to the Transportation Committee, and this is chaired by Council Member Kotsas and the other members on that committee, but we're all here tonight so we can take part in the discussion. The Transportation Committee members are Kotsas, Crowell, and Claude Felter. Thank you.
President Isley, thank you. And I'll try to keep this somewhat short and sweet, and maybe it probably won't have as much comment as, as our last topic. But the, so City Administration and EPW would like to apply for a small cities grant. And this one is, they're, they're attempting to secure $2 million for a construction year 2024 of a roundabout at the end of West Union, the West Union 682 intersection. And so they've already had additional, had people come out and do an estimate, and they believe $2 million will do a single lane roundabout, which will handle that volume of traffic. I did send out an email that was sent to me by Director Hetty that has some, some screenshots of the, of the location, also traffic volumes. We're seeing, depending on which, which road you're traveling on, either West Union, which turns in the 56th, or 680, I always get them mistaken, so I want to get it correct, 682. You're looking between 10,000 and 8,000 vehicles per day that are traveling on those, on those streets. So they believe that a, a single, single lane roundabout will handle this, this, this intersection. It'll also reduce the, the crashes that they have had there, which I don't know if I sent that to you already, if that was in the message that I sent to you, but I do have some crash data that I can contend out. Nothing significant in, in that, but we still do see a lot of, a lot of issues at our current, current intersection that is located there. So, why now? So the small cities grant is always one that we continue to talk about, in that if our city exceeds 25,000 in population with this current census, we will no longer be eligible for this, this pot of money. The, the deadline is June 15th, and currently, right now, if, if we were successful in securing in this round, there is only a 5% match that is required of the city. There's been talk that that will go up to 20% in future years. So if we can get this, secure this funding now for this construction year 2024, it would be, be very beneficial to the city. And then additionally, I know that we've been talking a little bit about the street improvements on West Union. I remind everybody that that is, we are shooting for a construction year of 2022. So this would not be happening at the same time as, as any improvement that might be coming forward with West Union. So I'm, that's what I've got. I'll open it up to comments. Member Claude Felter?
Sounds to me like you've made an excellent case of why we should let them do this. It sounds great. Why not try to get the $2 million?
Okay, Member Smedley?
But do you, maybe I missed what you said. Do you know where the 5% match from the city would come from? From what fund?
No, I don't think we're there yet, unless Mayor Patterson knows that there's, there's a specific pot that these matches get pulled from.
Uh, I know that Bob Hetty is on. I'll defer to Bob and let him answer that.
Yeah, Member Kotsas, Bob Hetty, yes, that currently is to be kept, to come out of the street rehab fund is where we've got it budgeted in our five-year projections. So it'd be roughly $100,000 for the match. You know, 20%, if we had to pay the 20%, it would be $400,000. And design will probably be somewhere around $200,000. So if we can get the 5% from the toll revenue credit, that will basically pay for the design as well.
Perfect. Yes. And that, and Director Hetty is making mention that this $2 million would just be for construction. So, so we would still be on the line for, for design and engineering, but that, that basically lets, lets ODOT know that we, that we're putting skin in the game in order to, to have this improvement done.
I just wanted to share that when we had the open house for the West Union Street Improvement Project, and there was, and folks learned about the roundabout that'd be put in to the intersection of West Union and Schaefer, the most common comment I heard was, well, why are we doing it there and not at this intersection that we're talking about? So I think this will be welcomed and people will be, will, will support this since they already see a need for it. Thank you.
Yes, Member Fall?
I, I have to like chime in on that, too, because whenever people talk, you know, every, every time, well, why don't they put one in here? This makes the most sense in all of the city. So I think that it would probably be very much appreciated by a lot of people, because the intersection is very chaotic and the light is so long and that people really kind of push it and that it's, it would be much easier as a roundabout. So thank you.
President Isley, and then Mayor Patterson?
Yes, thanks, Councilmember Crowell. I was able to call up that crash data that Robert Hetty provided, and it's 32 crashes in the last year. 18 of them had property damage, 14 of them had injuries.
Mayor Patterson, please.
I think this is probably a good time to put in a, a little plug, but I'll do it in a roundabout way. You know, as you indicated, that the small cities grants are predicated on a city having a population less than 25,000. We don't know if we're going to go over that 25,000 under the current 2020 census. So I'm pleading with everyone to please, at the sake of losing the opportunity to apply for small cities in the future, that everybody needs to be enumerated, so that we get those up. We are way off in terms of those numbers. So there is the possibility that, that we, with a bad undercount, we may not exceed 25,000. But this, if we do, this will be the last year in which we could apply, as I understand it, for the small cities grant because of potential population growth. But we are seriously lacking in certain precincts in the city when it comes to the current 2020 census enumeration.
Okay. Thank you. Kathy, Kathy Heck, Auditor Heck, thank you.
Hi. I just have to throw this in there because it's kind of already been briefly mentioned. But as Bob said, if this money comes out of the street rehab fund, that is the fund we put that income tax levy money into. And that money can only be used for street improvements. We don't pay any people out of there. We don't buy vehicles. It's a very important fund because it's obviously, clearly, you guys have heard this many times, extremely expensive to do these projects. And so it is important for that fund to get that money.
Okay. Thank you, Auditor Hekt. And that's a nice, a nice segue. I can move into the, the levy, the request to have a levy renewal of, of 1% for this, for have a levy renewal of, uh, of 1% uh, for this, uh, for the street fund. Uh, and so this is a 10-year levy that has, uh, that has been in existence for, uh, for two terms. So I believe 2000, 2001 was the first time that this one was, was approved by the voters and, uh, and put forward. So then we had a second time in 2010 that this, uh, this amount was, was requested. It's 1% of, uh, of, uh, of income tax. And so it's a, uh, it produces, it produces at this point about $900,000. Um, there is some, uh, some projections that we will see that slip, um, into the, uh, the 8 and maybe 750, uh, range. And so, uh, they are, you know, we're keeping an eye on those projections, but, but these, this is the type of funding that allows us to, uh, to help complete, um, a lot of these projects. And, um, there's been quite a few of them since, uh, even in the last 10 years that have, uh, that have benefited from, uh, from this additional, additional funding. And so I wanna stress here that tonight we're just, uh, we're, we're talking about putting this forward on the ballot so that the voters have the opportunity to decide if this is something that they want to, uh, continue to support. But, uh, I did send out the, uh, a document that, um, that EPW Director Bob Hetty has, uh, put together that shows, um, shows many of the, uh, of the, the improvements that have, uh, benefited from this, uh, from this fund and, uh, and just all of the, uh, all the things that, that it's done to date. And so, um, basically, like, I, that's, that's, that's all I have. I can open it up for comments here, President Isley.
Uh, just to give people an idea, it's a, it is, it's a 0.1% income tax. So it would be $10 additional income tax per 10,000, $10 of additional income tax per 10,000 of, of income. So just to give folks an idea of, of how much that amounts to. Thank you.
Thank you for correcting my decimal point. Uh, Member Fall.
And this is a renewal, right? So they've already been paying it for the last 10 years. So it's not really, um, an increase. It's just continuation of what they've been doing for years.
Correct. That was my comment as well.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Member Reisner.
So what's the procedure on, uh, next Monday? Are you gonna introduce an ordinance to, for council to put this on the ballot?
Correct, yes, yes.
And then it will go to the Board of Elections? Or does it go to Kathy for verification? What?
President Isley?
I believe the process, uh, yes, and Kathy can correct me. So can Debbie Walker, who are very familiar with it. But as I remember from last time, we passed the ordinance that authorizes it to be put on the ballot for the citizens to decide. That issue needs to go to the Board of Elections by 90 days before our fall election. So that's sometime in early August. Given the fact that we're on, council members are, will probably likely be on recess during July, the ordinance does need to, uh, move through and pass before June 30. So yes, it would be coming forward soon, uh, for consideration.
So I believe at this point, we probably only have three reads to, to get it in.
Well, sooner the better.
Okay, do we have, uh, anybody else with, with any comments? Okay, all right.
Chairman Kotsis.
Yes, yes.
I just, with Director Bob Hetty for Engineering Public Works. Yeah, I, I think we, kind of on our last discussion, showed the importance of this fund to leverage federal dollars. If we're successful on the 68256 roundabout, you know, for construction, we'd basically pay $100,000 for a $2 million improvement. But having, having local match, and that's why Athens has been so successful in ODOT District 10, uh, because we're able to have match dollars. A lot of the villages struggle to even get grant funding or any other type of funding because they can't come up with their match dollars. So citizens of Athens have, you know, for 20 years, they've ever been forward-thinking and, and been able to bring forth, um, you know, looks like in the 10-year projection from 2015, 2025, uh, about $11 million there that we put forth to, to spend in any way from widening East State Street in 2003 to repaving it again the last couple of years. Um, so we've done bridges, we've done a lot of annual paving with it. Like you mentioned, 38 projects, and a lot of those are large projects. So, thank you for, everybody for their support. And I just, you know, it's very important to be able to leverage any other type of funding that we, that may come forward, any grants or anything.
Right, um, Auditor Heck.
Um, I just thought I'd clarify a couple of things because, um, Jeff actually asked this. So when a referendum or initiative is brought forward, um, those require signatures from citizens to go on the ballot, and those do, um, go through my office and, um, then to the Board of Elections. Um, this, um, is actually a levy, um, that will, um, it, it will come through my office, but, um, it's mainly, once council passes their ordinance, that, uh, takes a place of having a lot of signatures and stuff. So the Board of Elections will work with my office on wording for the ballot language. But, um, so it does come through my office, but not the same way as, as a initiative or referendum. And, um, but once council decides to put it on the ballot, uh, as long as we don't mess up anything on our wording, um, you know, it will go on there. But, um, as I said, the, the Board of Elections will work with me, and then the language has to be approved by the state. But that's another important part about it, that council will have to have the wording. Of course, we have our previous wording on there. Um, one other thing I'd just like to clarify, since people wanna know, the estimated revenue for that tax for 572 or the Street Rehab Fund is about $800,000. We brought in just slightly under that last year. Um, so yes, I would expect that because it is based on income tax revenue, for that to go down slightly. But, but it will still be a, a very, uh, good bit of money that will be sorely needed by the time, uh, this project rolls around Stimson, for sure.
All right, Auditor Heck, thank you so much for the, for the clarifications. And, uh, you know, I'm bouncing back to what, uh, Director Hetty, uh, was, was saying about this fund. I think it's probably a good time to thank the citizens for allowing this to already happen for, uh, for two decades and that they, um, that they recognize that this is a, um, an important component that allows us to, uh, to leverage, leverage more funds. And so, um, you know, I, I would, you know, personally, I would, would love to see this, uh, continue. Uh, but, but really, I think it's, um, well, it's up to the voters if, uh, if we allow it to, to go that far. So thank you so much. And with that, I think we're done with, um, Transportation Committee. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. We'll move on to the Finance and Personnel Committee, and this is chaired by Councilmember Crowell and also has members Reisner, Kotsis, and Smedley.
Uh, thank you, President Isley. Uh, we have two items, uh, on the agenda tonight. Um, uh, an appropriation, um, and a transfer. Um, the first, uh, are a, um, payments, loan payments that are due for our, um, water debt, for the improvements we have made to our, uh, water plant infrastructure. And we have two payments due, uh, at $166,172 each. Uh, these payments are due in July and January 1st. So we will need to appropriate, uh, that, that January 1st payment, uh, in 2020, uh, as it is due on January 1st. Uh, Auditor Heck, would you like to speak any further to this appropriation?
Turn myself on, sure. So this is a new loan, and, um, so this will be our first time to start paying it down, um, July 1st. The OWDA payments are all twice a year, July 1st and January 1st. However, we have to have the money for the July 1st payment in, in the bank and appropriated, um, December 31st. So, um, what we need is, uh, as you mentioned, the exact amount, um, Member Crowell. So about $335,000 to make those payments for this year. That money needs to be transferred, appropriated in the Water Fund, transferred to the Water Debt Fund, and then, um, appropriated in the Water Debt Fund for payment. So, um, that's a, a process that gets confusing for some people, but we've done it many times, and, um, I know that, uh, Debbie knows all about that. So, um, that's where we are on that. And, um, as I said, that, that would be new for us. But, um, we, we already did a transfer like this earlier in the year for the loans that, uh, we already had on the debt schedule. And then we got information from OWDA about this, uh, these loan payments. So that's, um, that's where we are on that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Auditor Heck, uh, and for clarifying. This is a, of course, a transfer from one fund to another and also an appropriation. Uh, then the other item was, uh, Community Center. Um, we need to, uh, uh, should, this is, uh, also, I believe, a transfer and an appropriation, Auditor Heck. It's $28,300, and this is for, um, I'm not sure if it's a boiler or a chiller at the community center.
Well, remember, Crowell, yeah, you're right to mention both. The, there was an appropriation in the original budget for the chiller. This is for a chiller, which is $112,000 or something like that. But not too long ago, we, um, they needed to use about $20,000 out of that, um, capital, uh, account line, um, to repair the boiler. Um, and so they need a, a new appropriation, additional appropriation to move forward with the chiller. My last figure was $28,300, so we might wanna check that, um, before. I, I knew it was around 20,000, but, um, the exact amount. So what, that one will actually be appropriated in Fund 272, which is the leftover, um...
Levy.
Levy revenue for the community center construction. And so, um, as a, yeah, that one, oh, maybe you're right. Then I'd have to look that up. I get confused, but, um, yeah, I don't know if we actually do expenses out of that one. So, but that's the amount we need, and I'll look that up really quickly. But I have two other community center issues, if I'm allowed to bring those up.
Yeah, I know, um, if that's okay with, um, Ms. Walker. I believe that, talking about the community center, we can also talk about, um, the budget's a little bit tight there, I believe, Auditor Heck.
Yes, yeah, so this actually, yeah, so just to follow up on that last one, yes. There, there, it will be just an appropriation in 272 and paid for directly out of there. The other two issues that just came up, one of them just came up on Friday, but, um, the, or well, this is the other one, um, is, is making, um, is the lack of revenue for the community center. They have not had really any surplus money for a while. You know, we've always tried to keep that operation reasonably priced, which means we, we just don't have any extra money. They've been completely shut down. However, we do have some employees still on payroll. We still have to pay the electric bill, phone bill, et cetera, et cetera. So, um, we, I had asked, I thought on Friday that I would ask for a transfer from 273, which is the new levy money that can be used for operating. We did this once last year, uh, later in the year, but we transferred $20,000 into 271 for, um, for, I believe it was for personnel costs also. So we need that now. We have just enough money in there now, um, to make the two payrolls. However, for May, however, um, this is, uh, um, we have to pay, make a pension payment this month. Um, and, um, which will bump our, you know, payroll costs up a little bit. And we have someone retiring. And so I would like to, um, I, I would request $40,000 be transferred from 273 to 271 to make sure that we can pay all our bills to keep the center, you know, going, and the, uh, handful of people who are still on payroll, until things get better.
Member Smedley.
Is, uh, do you have a sense, uh, Auditor Heck, how far, how long that $40,000 will go for? Until what time? Until, uh, how, how much will that cover, essentially?
Turn on again. I wouldn't expect us to, um, have to do that again for a while. Um, although, um, if I, I, I hate to put it out there, it's, probably shouldn't, I, I guess it's actually public record. But when someone retires, not just leaves for another job, we have to pay out up to three years of their vacation and 240 hours of sick leave. Um, this employee has, um, full amounts of both of those, and it will probably be about $15,000 just for that. So, you know, that 20,000 I thought I wanted. Um, so yeah, I, I guess, you know, you can reduce it if you want. Um, I just think that to get us through the summer, um, there's gonna be a lot of things that won't happen this summer. I, I don't know if they're gonna be able to do any day camp or anything like that. So I, I don't know when they'll get any other revenue streams back to help make up for, um, some of the bills. I can't imagine what the electric bills are for that building and, you know, just things like that. There's, there's just a lot of things, um, that have to be paid whether anybody's in there or not.
Right, really, my concern wasn't, was that too much? It was, is that gonna be enough to cover for the duration of the closure? That's...
Oh, you know, that's a tough one, um, but, yeah, yeah. I guess, um, I haven't had a chance to talk to the director, Terry Moore, about that one. Um, she's been watching that, and I think there, she's still, uh, looking at ways, a, as a lot of other places are, how you can still have daycare, how you can still do summer camps, you know, and, and things, precautions you can, uh, take to make them safer. I don't know that they're gonna be able to do any of that, um, this summer.
Have they pursued the pandemic license for the childcare center?
I don't know. I, I, the mayor might know that one.
I don't, I don't think that they have.
Yeah.
There is. Member Reisner, do you wanna chime in here?
I just had a question for the auditor. Um, talking about the retirement and paying out the, uh, uh, vacation, uh, accumulation, I thought we had passed an ordinance or changed the personnel policy where they, an employee had to burn up any excess vacation time to down, down to about one year.
It's down to three years. It was three years, they can, I know, they can accrue up to three years, which is why I fought so hard to keep us from letting people accrue beyond that.
Yeah, I know, it was like five and 10 years. And we had people, we, people would start burning it down.
It, it's got, yeah. The thing is, um, and they have, but they, um, they might still have their three years in there because they're constantly earning more. Every payday, they get, uh, uh, you know, an accrual added. So, um, it would...
The idea was you use it or you lose it. You know, vacation is not a, a bank account. It's, it's to recharge and reinvigorate the employee so they come back full of new energy and ready to work harder.
Well, that's not the way our contracts and, um, fringe benefit package reads. Uh, they get, they can, they can be paid out for up to three years. So anything over that, if they accrue more than three years, they, it, it, they lose it. Um, but we still have to pay out three years' worth. It's just like sick time. Sick time is, uh, uh, not a benefit, it's a safety net for you to use when you need it.
When you're sick, yeah.
Yeah, but then...
Well, we're getting off topic.
But if you don't use your sick time, then you have, then you are rewarded with this 240 hours payout for not being sick and, and being at your job.
Or, or being sick and being at your job. Now, that's really what's going on here.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I just know that, that, um...
I think we, I would think we have the policy right now, and that's as it is. So thanks for clarifying, Auditor Heck. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else on the Finance and Personnel have anything to add to the discussion today? Member Kotsis, Member Smedley? Uh, any other council members who would like to chime in? Mayor? The only thing I wanna add to all of this is that we are really looking very closely at the position in which someone is retiring from. And, and in this current situation... And and in this current situation, COVID-19, we are not rushing out to fill a lot of these these positions and leaving them vacant, which then to Councilmember Smedley's question earlier about that, whether it's, is it enough that is being appropriated? Not that it's too much. One of the, one of the things that we have that we can use as savings is not filling that position, because that is a budgeted position for the year. And by not filling it, that can help get us through the situation that we're in, and in particular for arts, parks, and recreation. And Auditor Heck, thank you for for mentioning that, that, and I think council knows this, is that a lot of the programming there is all on hold. We are still waiting to see what the governor's reopening plan looks like for for, for childcare, preschools, things of that nature, and until we hear from the governor. And then this holds for other things that fall in the world of arts, parks, and recreation in terms of reopening. So we're kind of in a holding pattern to see what other things could be opened up in the future when it comes to the world of arts, parks, and recreation. You know, our playgrounds are still, the playground structures are still closed to the public until further notice. So, and not that there was any revenue coming in from our playground or anything, there was expenses going out to replace playground equipment. But we're certainly looking at everything possible under arts, parks, and recreation, and what can be open and what can't be open. And is it more cost-effective to not have certain things reopen if we get into the summer months before the governor's order comes out for reopening? Member Smedley?
Thank you, member Reisner. And I would just add, if if we fall under the criteria, I'd highly recommend we look into whether or not we want to try to get the pandemic license for childcare. As businesses start to reopen, people are going to need childcare. And it does limit the number of children per classroom, but it provides an option for those essential workers who are going back to work.
I will, I will touch base with with the director to see if this is something that they are exploring. I just haven't heard that mentioned at this point in time, although I have thought about it.
Got it. Thank you.
President Nisley, I believe that completes Finance and Personnel. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll stand adjourned. It's 8:14 PM, and we'll be back in session for regular business and review of ordinances next week on May.